Teeth order. Do we have someone acting as clerk? All right, please call the roll.
All right, Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Bokey.
President.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss, Deputy Mayor Moss, pardon me, Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whelan.
President.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
All righty.
We have a quorum, and would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas with particular note of our neighbors 62nd Air Wing now evacuating civilians from Afghanistan followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business is proclamations and presentations and business showcase. For this, we have our communications manager, Jim Kopriva. If, I don't know if our recipients are here.
Correct, they're both joining digitally today.
Okay. Do you have the script?
All right, Carrie, I have unmuted you. You should be able to start your video now. All right, I can see you. Let's make sure I can put the spotlight on you for everybody.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carrie Stalder. I'm the owner of Manic Meatballs. We opened in December last year, right in the middle of the pandemic, in the Silicon neighborhood of Lakewood.
Yes, and I had the chance just recently to go visit Manic Meatballs and also Olympic Moving and Storage. Unfortunately, their representative does not appear to have joined us just yet. But if everyone's okay, I'd like to start by playing a short video that I produced about Manic Meatball and about Olympic Moving and Storage. We have a quick conversation with each, if possible, and, you know, they're very different businesses, but to show, to talk about a business challenge despite their different business models that kind of brings them together in the contemporary business climate. So with that in mind, I'd like to share this video.
This is Manic Meatballs, and I'm Carrie Stalder. I'm the owner. And, you know, we started this place December 26th in the middle of a pandemic, and we're here. We have lines, which is fantastic, and we've survived, and we just have, we're really on a roll. We're just ready to roll. Yeah, so our team has grown by, it's tripled already, and then we actually just got a food truck, so we're waiting for that to get wrapped, so we're just a couple weeks off from that. So I would say definitely at lunch, we have great support from JBLM. There's a lot of service members, so we totally love that. We can actually get a whole unit through of like 10 to 12 people in minutes, so, because we have, we, we're all about manic, we're all about speed, so we have a good setup that everybody kind of reacts to the guests that come through. So definitely love that. That's the reason we're here, is to serve our service members, you know, why not come here instead of something else down the road?
My name is Jeff. I'm the general manager for Olympic Moving and Storage, Beacons Northwest in Lakewood at the Woodbrook Business Industrial Park. We're a household goods moving and storage company and moving people locally all the way to international with household goods storage as well as actual transportation services. Yes, we've been at this location about eight and a half years. We were one of the first buildings built here in this Woodbrook Business Park, and we've seen tremendous growth around us, especially in the last two years.
All right, so you saw a contrast of two interesting businesses here. One, well-established, one that's been around for a while, eight plus years in Lakewood, and has other branches and other nearby locations, and specializes in transcontinental logistics. And at Manic Meatball, you have something else. You have, you know, a dream realized, entrepreneurship and new business, and that's slinging meatballs and serving lunch to service members and others in the Silicon community. And I really enjoyed visiting both, and what I felt was, I'd like to kind of take a new angle with our economic development focus and with these contrasting businesses to kind of talk about challenges that both are working on. And so to that end, I, when I visited, I asked them, you know, what is a challenge you face? And the first thing off the tongue was labor market, how difficult it is to hire. And what I thought I'd do is while we have these business managers here, I hope Jeff has joined us, in fact, I'll check right now. It does not appear that he has, but that labor market, both businesses are facing the same challenge. It is tough to attract talent right now. And to that end, both have different strategies for hiring. Carrie, after, I'll introduce kind of Jeff's points for him, but I'll have you kind of talk about what you told me when we met the other day. So Olympic Moving and Storage, one of their big things is getting drivers, and how do you do it? And they were petitioning and lobbying to lower the CDL age because they feel like they're missing out on that early career window when 18-year-olds and 19-year-olds are trying to figure out what to do with their lives. Are they, you know, considering trucking? You know, good pay, stable benefits, good career opportunities, growing industry, increasing need. But, you know, if you're not able to allow 18- to 21-year-olds to drive, you know, will you ever satisfy that need? And so they're kind of going big and, you know, focusing on the macroeconomic picture. And Carrie, you were telling me about you were letting your employees do the talking, so to speak.
True. Yeah, we've been actually really fortunate in this labor market because we were able to hire a little bit at the beginning of the pandemic or a little before the labor market really tightened up. And so we built a really strong team then and have really asked and have really worked on retention and treating them very well. Like tomorrow we'll be closed for, we don't close, so we're closed one day probably for a long time. Like the only other time we closed since we've opened is just during the ice storms. So we're closing tomorrow just to really give our team a break and celebrate ourselves at American Lake and celebrate our successes. So we're really focusing on treating people well, and it's paid off right now as the labor market's so tight because most of our new hires have been referrals from current team members.
Yeah, incredibly impressive. You know, you go by any restaurant and you see, you know, help wanted, help wanted, and, you know, have your employees take care of that for you just through reputation, word of mouth, and camaraderie and team spirit alone, you know, really a fantastic achievement. So what else have you kind of experienced? Tell us about opening a business during a pandemic. How, you know, you said there's lines finally, but, you know, what was really something that saw you through this challenge?
Well, we've been really, we've been really fortunate all the way through. There is a Dine Pierce County Facebook page and a lot of just organic support around that. So that whole group really brought really kind, understanding guests right at the beginning when we were kind of just getting, you know, our processes down and things like that. And we've had really good coverage outside of the area, so we've had really, Evening Magazine did a focus on us recently, so I'd say that. And then recent, more recently, like this video, thank you for allowing us to, me to be here today and getting the word out here, but we also have some local magazines like Lakeside Living that have picked us up as well. So we're just thankful that, you know, one of the things that, I'm actually friends with a number of other restaurant owners, and if you are not supporting local restaurants right now, we will not have local restaurants to visit after this pandemic. We all thought that the kind of wave was over, but it's not, it's actually much worse right now for most people because there's a lot of supply chain problems, so we, they can't offer what was previously on their menu, so a lot of people are not visiting as often. So I would just encourage everyone, support your local restaurants now. They are still closing their doors probably faster than before.
Wow, really troubling and concerning to hear, but, you know, another ripple as the many thousands of ripples from this pandemic on the local business community affecting enterprise, big and small, as we just saw, old and new. And Carrie, thank you very much for taking time for the video and for joining us today, and best of luck.
Yeah, thank you. And just a little plug, one of the things we've been fortunate about is we're obviously one of the few that sling meatballs in the whole United States, really, but because of that, we'll be at the Washington State Fair this year, so check us out or just stop by in the neighborhood and introduce yourself as well.
That's right, and your, and your food truck too is coming soon, right? Is that how you'll make your debut at the fair?
We'll be there with the food truck, yeah. So it will be onsite just for another day or two at the restaurant, but then we're going to roll out to the fair, so we're thrilled to be a part of that. And we're going to have bacon wrapped meatballs on a long stick, so just all stacked up there, and our flooded fries, and then of course, our manic meal, which is what we traditionally sell at the restaurant.
That's so exciting. Thanks again.
Yeah, thanks, everyone.
So Jim, do we have Olympic on?
I beg your pardon?
You were going to check if Olympic was on? I guess not.
We'll grab the list and we'll progress to public.
Oh, we'll move on. I should note that gaining entry to the Piala Fair as a food concessionaire is no small feat. It's, people wait in line for years to be different enough to gain entry. No, I said if Olympic was on. Right, thank you. Then we'll move to a public comment. This is when any member of the public may speak to a matter of interest to the city council, whether or not it's on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The yellow light comes on at 30 seconds, red light's on when your time is done. I think some more people are signing up. I'll get that list as we go, but we'll start off with the first person signed up, Mr. Glennesby. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence. Hit the button at the base.
Last week, I saw a glaring hole in the transportation plan. The center of Lakewood, Silicon Boulevard, is unpaved for a good portion of the center of the city. About 1984, the sewer came through, and that was the last fresh pavement that we had on that street. It took about a month to two months for them to dig the 30-foot deep hole and put the eight to 10-foot sewer line through that area, shut down businesses in the area, including mine. What I would do would be to challenge the city council to make a walk between Bridgeport to Lockburn on the south side of Silicon Boulevard and see what kind of obstructions you get into just walking down the street or the side of the street. There are areas where you brush the holly trees. Used to be really bad with the blackberry bushes that grew over into the street, and you'd have to walk around that. Telephone poles out in the walkway area. In 2006, city took 14 feet off the front of my property to lengthen Silicon Boulevard and provide sidewalks, gutters, and so forth, so, and widen the road. Glad I still got another three minutes. Gee, I could have prepared a long thing here. I'm glad you all got masks so you could greet Mr. Hoggan today. I wasn't notified, so I didn't, I didn't bring my mask in. But, you know, we need sidewalks in that area because the kids walk from Bridgeport down to Lockburn on the south side of the street. I see it all the time, and it's a dangerous area. The house next to me had a car in the middle of the night that was going on the opposite side of the street, crossed the street, and ran down the fence, people next to me. But that's kind of typical of what happens in that area. Now I've got an eight-foot driveway next to a 30-foot gas station driveway, so that's going to be interesting, especially when my wife is deaf and backs out. Thank you.
Next person on the list is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen, I don't know if this mask is for Sharia law for women or if it's for pandemic afterward we've been watching coming out of Afghanistan. Anyway, it's right, it's interesting. Trying to figure out why you've got so much trouble on the West Coast. It's because of your narrative. Everybody's got a little different narrative to protect, and so you can't talk to each other. You can't look at things the way they are and analyze them and talk to each other because you're afraid of disagreement. And this truck driver thing is crazy. Big thing that holds a lot of, a lot of young people back from truck driving is about 30% of them can't pass the drug test. And there's really no education headed towards these younger people. They stay off the drugs, they can get a truck driving job, and it'll pay more than, Europe, Europe State's probably one of those, I didn't look it up, probably pays people to stay home. So you add that to the problem. Look at the drug problem, look at this situation, see what's causing people not, these truck driving jobs, some of them are paying really good money. And the things that I'm reading is 30% of them come in and ply, and they can't pass the drug test because they're not smart enough to realize that marijuana stays with your system for 30 days. Sometimes they even are on a good job and get kicked off the job because a lot of those random tests are, a lot of those are up to random tests. But it isn't just that. Gee whiz, you know? I mean, sitting in the Midwest, they used to say horror movies were made in Hollywood. Now they say the mid, the western coast is a horror show. Burning buildings, you don't seem to find competent governors that understand that you got to back up in a national guard. All the dumb things that happen, and it happens, you're on the news every day, every day. You're defunding police, you're doing this, and you can't figure out why you don't have safe streets. You gotta, you gotta, I can go on all night long. You're a sanctuary state. You're a target. You could just as well have a sign on the freeway that says criminals from all over the world, welcome, welcome in Washington. Deliver us your drugs and your fentanyl and everything, and then wonder why you got people laying all over the street, you know, that can't function. And drugs are brain damaging, but nobody can stand, a lot of people can see it, but they're afraid to stand up to it because you're too politically correct. Thank you.
Amelia Escobedo is next.
Hello, my name is Amelia Escobedo, and I live in Lakewood. I am here today to speak on a lot of topics. The first one I want to talk about is, do you have, does the Lakewood Police Department have a climate survey? And if they don't, I would like to request that they get one done, like the soldiers do on JBLM, so we can see what kind of chain of command is in place and to see what is happening within the force. Is there complaints? We, as a city, I've heard it, haven't heard any complaints from the LPD officers, so that's something I want to know. The other thing that I want to talk about is recreation centers. So far, I have been by two recreation centers. One is all the way closed down and boarded up. It would be a beautiful place to use, but right now it's currently closed. We only have the Boys and Girls Club. It is currently full, so no other children can go there to play right now because it's full. We need recreation centers for our children. We need recreation centers for more children that are growing up, and not just in Lakewood, right here at Fort Silicon Park. We need one in Woodbrook. We need one in Silicon. We need different, in all these communities that are poor, there is nowhere for these children to play safely or for free. There are programs that you have to pay for. Another thing that I'm going to hit on is I believe that the city council should have phones that they should hold and answer daily during business hours, so we can actually ask you questions. I would love to be able to ask each and every one of you questions, but I haven't done that yet, and I would love to have that done. Why, why can't we have that? I feel like y'all, y'all don't interact with us enough, so you can know what we're thinking, so you know what's in our thoughts. That's why I come up here every Monday, that y'all have these sessions. Another thing I want to say is we need to revitalize this area for the kids. I know you talked about making a park here, make a park with a splash pad, make a park with a recreation center, make a park that has lots of grass and trees. Show the children that you care. Another thing I want to talk about is renaming Colonial Plaza to American Square. Another thing I want to talk about is a museum that we have in Colonial Square. I went there, and there was only one thing showing that even Native Americans were on this land. A picture and a little quote, that's it, at the museum. What kind of respect is that? What kind of, what is that? That's not respect. It's not showing the pride that you have in this town, that it is native land. Where is our culture? Where have you hidden it? Where?
Thank you. Next is, next is Christopher Escobedo.
Thank you, councilmembers, for letting me be here today and talk to you. As of April 2020, according to the census, there are 13,485 kids and 9,796 seniors living in Lakewood. My name is Christopher Michael Escobedo, and I'm the father of five, a business owner, and the president of Rise Against Racism, a nonprofit in Washington State. My fellow Americans, we come together this night to hold our city council members accountable. We aren't allowed to ask questions to give our answers, so instead, we should just lay their mistakes out on the table so our fellow community members can see that it's time to vote them out. First, I will tell you a little bit about us, then I will list a few disappointments in Lakewood, and finally, I'll tell you what we can do about it. Me and my wife are from Texas, and lately, I've been asking people that have lived here, how did y'all let them get away with so much for so long? And the answer usually is, we didn't know. The Lord brought us here through the military to buy a house and help this community blossom into a truly accepting and diverse American community. Since my wife started running for office, we have learned so much about Lakewood and are sad to see the mayor and deputy mayor continually disrespecting the people they work for. My wife has been the war and deserves respect at all times. Now, let us turn to the two disappointments I, you know, I've seen in Lakewood. First, there's no Lakewood Recreation Center for our children and seniors. The deputy mayor rudely put on Facebook that I was incorrect because we have a Boys and Girls Club. I thought you were the smart one, deputy mayor, but I guess math isn't your strong subject. After the call in the Boys and Girls Club, we found out that, of course, it's already full. We must organize together and get the good rich people to pitch in and build at least two recreation centers around Lakewood. This will give our kids things to do and keep them out of trouble and into physical activities. The second issue I have in Lakewood is there's multiple lakes with no, little to no public access for fishing. When we speak to the community, we learn that it's always been a big issue and that the rich around the lakes don't want others using the lake. I believe there are also good wealthy Americans living around our lakes, and these lakes are public lakes that belong to each community member living here. Fishing docks must be built on lakes that it is possible, not a boring L shape either. Instead, let us build a huge circle that is allowed for, that allows fishing on the outside and maybe swimming in the middle. Our families deserve a place to make memories and build strong relationships with our fellow community members. We don't have to accept this mediocrity. We must organize and come together to vote them out and get ready for a future worth fighting for. Today is nothing like yesterday, and tomorrow's up to us. Save the Gary Oaks by making it a priority. Eat at Arco Eddy's Restaurant to help in survival devastation caused by the city. Get vaccinated, Lakewood, because we love you and need your help. Thank you.
Your ideas are welcome, but came very close there. We do not allow for political campaigning from public property. Next is Christina Minetti.
First, I wanted to say thank you that everybody already is wearing masks, because I was going to say maybe it'd be a good idea since the Delta is getting so annoyingly common in Pierce County again, so that's great you're wearing them. Also, I wanted to ask, I sent pictures to you to go with what I'm going to say, so if you looked at your email, you'd find the two pictures I was going to illustrate what I'm saying with. And so also, thanks And so also thanks for the, the tree preservation video. We all watched it with great interest, so that was interesting to see. And I just wanted to say that, well, I'm Christina Minetti, I'm from Lakewood, I've lived here for a long time. And I was also very glad to hear the good news that the city council has decided to consider changing the tree preservation code. I'm sure you're not surprised that I'm glad. So now it's time for us to think about how best to make it stronger and less ambiguous and how to eliminate its loopholes. So I thought I'd just give you one idea for today, it's pretty dramatic idea and it'll be easy to remember. The first glaring problem with the tree preservation code as it is now is that, and it's been this way since I think Mr. Branch told me in nineteen ninety-nine, is that it allows owners of properties under seventeen thousand square feet to cut down anything on the lot without even a permit. So this rule allows for untold destruction, as you can imagine, and it should be abolished. So just for example, it's very illustrative, take the property at ninety-five oh nine Waverly Drive Southwest, which is just beyond the tall Holly Hedge that surrounds the Holly Hedge Development, and it's a few houses away from my own. These are before and after pictures I sent you. And so the first one, it's the house standing there, kind of a colonial type style with big oak trees over it and lots of shade. And that was taken in two thousand and seven. And the next one is of like, it looks like a war zone, actually. It's like concrete and gravel and just like pieces of wood and a blue tarp and stuff and there are no trees. They cut down every single tree on that lot. Um, so there, there was the stop work, war quarter placed on in July twenty twenty for illegal construction and he was attempting to create an addition, but by knocking down the entire house basically to add twelve bedrooms. So thirteen oaks were logged over the course of three days, as I think I've mentioned before, but all the neighbors, of course, were affected, all their shade loving plants died or whatever. They had to install air conditioners, they had to pay more to cool in the summer. And of course, the canopy was destroyed because it was part of a grove. So I learned that this was from nineteen ninety-nine and I don't understand the reason behind it. So it was clearly faulty though, and it should be completely abolished. If they're protected somewhere in Lakewood, they should be protected everywhere in Lakewood. So thanks a lot.
Next person to speak is James Dunlop. James Dunlop.
Just one moment before you go, sir. I see that two Zoom participants have raised their hands. If others wish to comment, please do the same and raise your hand and we'll get to you shortly. And your turn, just wanted to put a reminder out.
My name is James Dunlop and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I would like to thank the city for changing their buildyourbetterhere.com website. No longer does it talk about bulldozing barriers. Instead, it tells us that there's a dream we all have of the perfect tree lined neighborhood where your neighbors smile and wave at you, where business owners call you by your name, where you feel safe letting your kids stay out until the lights come on. That's a dream we can all share. Nice fifties imagery, a return to Eisenhower's America. However, we should, however, we should add to that dream. Where you feel safe going to bed at night, not being afraid that the next morning several more remnants of the oak savanna are going to be ripped, gouged and cut out of the ground to make way for warehouse space. Unfortunately, when you dig deeper into the website, the city promises that we can help you scale up your light industrial or warehousing operation fast. That's another way of saying bulldozing barriers, isn't it? This isn't much comfort for those living around the former Oakwood School. The transition of the oak savanna on which it stood to a warehouse is almost a done deal. The residents are not part of the dream. The situation facing Oakwood is indeed urgent. Unlike in Springbrook, an area also facing habitat destruction, there aren't spirited advocates for this endangered community. And none of the city's council members' dreams for their personal futures are negatively impacted by the development. This raises the question of who is going to advocate for an area that is about to be devastated? Ideally, the council members themselves should advocate for it, or at least one of you. I know this is difficult because what is about to happen to Oakwood will have zero impact on your lives. However, if you're serious about serving your community, you'll understand that your focus shouldn't be confined to narrow bureaucratic and commercial interests. You have a moral responsibility to safeguard the dreams of everyone in Lakewood. It's not about your community or my community, my community, but the whole community. And right now, the people around Oakwood as a community are about to have their dreams shattered. And I should also like to say that it might be a good idea for each of the seven members of the council to have an area of Lakewood that they are particularly associated with. I mean, in Seattle, seven of the nine members have a priest, have, I think, an electoral district that they're responsible for. And so I think in Lakewood, it might be a good idea to have the same thing. And you were already, Amelia already suggested that you have a phone number where you can be got hold of. I think if each of you were given, had a, had an area of Lakewood that you're responsible for, I think it would make the Lakewood, Lakewood have a better community. Thank you.
Next up is Jenna Lee.
Hello, my name is Jenna Lee and I am a resident of Seattle. So like others in the audience, I saw Lakewood's video, Tree Preservation Efforts by the City of Lakewood, Washington recently. So it starts off with a quote, "Before a city can be a great place to live, it has to be habitable." That's the basic importance of trees. The central message is why I propose that Lakewood require that A, independent third-party arborists evaluate the safety risks posed by significant trees prior to issuing removal permits, and B, independent third-party consultants produce environmental reports for developers hoping to cut trees in industrially zoned areas. As Lakewood's current tree code stands, parties who are seeking to cut down significant trees are allowed to hire their own arborists and consultants. This undoubtedly creates a conflict of interest for the arborists and consultants involved, regardless of their academic or professional credentials, and bring into question the validity of their conclusions as well as the permits that are, that come as a result of their assessments. If I'm being paid to provide a service, I'm less likely to remain objective in the evaluations I give to my clients. This is why expert witnesses who have been given monetary compensation for trial testimonies are required to disclose their financial ties in a courtroom. The city must recognize the potential influence of money whenever they are making the crucial decision to produce a tree cutting permit. The quality of life for Lakewood's residents and the lives of our Gary Oaks are at stake. The city's video recognizes the importance of our oaks and the need to fight climate change. Lakewood must now walk its talk and require independent third-party arborists and environmental consultants. Before a city can be a great place to live, it has to be habitable. And this is one concrete step to make sure Lakewood remains habitable. Thank you, that's all I have.
So next is Kate Barlow.
Hello, my name is Kat Barlow. I'm a Tacoma resident, but I grew up here in Lakewood. I chased my cousins around the trunks of Gary Oak trees. I played hide and seek in their branches and I watched lots of squirrels gathering up their nuts. Um, I don't like talking to people, so forgive me. So Gary Oaks have a protected status, as I'm sure you know by now. They provide essential habitats for native species, beauty and shade that cools the environment around them. At the last meeting, I was here until ten PM. I listened while all of the community members here spoke and nearly everyone talked about the importance of Gary Oaks. They were met with bored stares and what I would call a quick to anger response from the mayor. I listened throughout the entire tax presentation and I listened at the end of the meeting where you all went around talking about events that you went to. A few city council members began talking about spray parks and their friend in Spokane that said that they had one that utilized space. Somebody talked about moms that they knew who wanted a spray park. Um, meanwhile, a U.N. secretary said that the most recent report about climate change is a code red for humanity. And here you guys sit while your community is practically begging you not to let these endangered habitats be lost, not to let the area heat up with asphalt and warehouses, to keep carbon sequestering trees, and you have the nerve to get the most excited and animated that I saw you do all night about spray parks? That honestly wastes freshwater resources. Um, even if you did have a spray park, I'm sure it would be in wealthier neighborhoods, not the low income ones that need it, as we've seen in Tacoma. Um, so please listen to your community members that you guys are supposed to serve and help eliminate the loopholes and protect the Gary Oak trees. Thank you.
Joy Brown is next.
Hello, I just, first of all, want to thank you for your, the job you do and the hard work you put in and, and I have confidence that, that you'll be able to come up with solutions for the oak trees. I live in Lakewood, just down the street from the house she spoke of at ninety-six twenty-nine Waverly. It is a damn shame. Anyway, excuse the language, but what I want to mainly talk about is Springbrook. I spent six years working for Safe Streets in the Springbrook area and poured, tried to bring resources to that community. I just want to say that our trees are a great resource and let's do all we can to save them. You guys can figure it out, you're smart. I know it's complicated, but I have confidence. And just on one short little note, I just, I have a cabin that I recently purchased up on Chinook Pass and had to evacuate today because of the fire. So it's important that we save the trees we do have. And thank you so much for, for doing all you can to do that. Thanks, bye-bye.
Next, uh, next up is Ado Akidis.
All right, I only got three minutes. Are you guys allowed to talk during this? Damn, all right. That's okay, I was hoping to hear some, you know, responses, but that's all right. I don't want to hear too much from the peanut gallery anyway. Don't let the lower head count fool you. People still don't like you guys, they're just scared of COVID. Your performance reviews are still going to be horrible. Man is fallible. Every religion out there has a very common thread, that man is fallible. So when you make decisions that better the rich and not the people of the community who have already spoken against you guys cutting the, down these streets, we call that fallibility. But you had every opportunity to stop it and I hear that you guys are discussing now. Just stop it. The people you represent have spoken and you're not listening, so that's no longer fallibility. That's greed and carelessness. And you should be ashamed of yourselves. When injustice occurs, we call it fallibility. But the failure to bring justice to injustice, that is no longer fallibility, that's cowardice. Like the case of Mike Wiley. Let's get into it. When someone says, one in a million shot, what do you guys think about? Golf? Basketball? I think of Mike Wiley. Cause after him and his little goon squad murdered Leonard Thomas, that was the first thing he said. That was a one in a million shot. As if that wasn't enough, he killed Said Joaquin just last year after blinding every camera being utilized that night. And did y'all hold him accountable? Nope. You guys asked, asked him to teach a class. During his multiple, you know, so he's had multiple complaints of excessive force? Nothing. He purchased weapon silencers using the Lakewood PD letterhead without proper approval from anybody in Lakewood PD. Was he held accountable? Nope, nothing. All charges cleared. So my question that you guys obviously can't answer, but I would love to hear an answer one day, is what do you guys think of Mike Wiley? Cause I think he's a coward and he's still on the badge. So what does that say about you guys? One last point, and this is an observation, not an accusation. I see a lot more eyes focused on this podium when the speaker is white. So, you know, maybe listen to my guys back here and prove me wrong. Cause I've noticed a trend. My time's up, all power to the people. I got you, I got you, I ain't talking to you. I, I, I see, I, I saw that face.
Sit down, sir, you're disrupting the meeting. Next up is Bunche Carter.
Hi, my name is Bunche Carter. I'm a resident of Lakewood and I'm the Minister of Defense of the Black Panther Party of Washington. This entire time I've been sitting here, I've been trying to figure out exactly what I wanted to say. And then it came to me out of nowhere. I just got a question, really. How much do you really value, and it's strange to ask this in a pandemic, how much do you really value essential things? It's a real question and the reason I ask it is very simple. I've been here numerous times now and heard people say, hey, Gary Oaks, you can't cut them down because of this, 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 and this. All of which are pluses for the people, as well as yourselves. Yet the only other thing I'm hearing from everyone else is, no matter what we say, they're coming down because that's what they're tied to. But we know that they're essential. So I question again, how much do you really value essential things? How, how well do you know how much young black men have been fed negative images of themselves through the media, sometimes in their own neighborhoods? We could get into the reason for that, but I don't have time for it right now. So when there's a young man who's a light, who shines bright, who loves his family, who's loved by everyone who knows him personally, and he gets murdered by a person who's supposed to be a peacekeeper? I can't believe I even said that word. I can't believe I said that. But my question is, when you still have young black men in Lakewood growing up, learning most of what they know, if not from media, from the internet, or from the other people that they see in their community that looks like them? When you have a light that shines that bright and it gets extinguished and his family because they're not here? Then we forgot about it. Let me be very frank and remind you and let you know, I haven't forgotten. Ado hasn't forgotten, the Black Panther Party hasn't forgotten, the White Panther Party hasn't forgotten, the citizens of Lakewood haven't forgotten. Because people like Said Joaquin are essential. For what Mike Wiley's been able to do since Said's been killed, makes me question just how essential he is. So again, I ask you, how much do you really value essential things? The people talking to you, your job is irrelevant without them. They're essential. I don't got to repeat the question, you already heard it. All power to the people.
Next person is Obanuk Awal X.
Good evening. So it's actually Obanayo.
Good evening. So it's actually Obanayo. But y'all don't speak Swahili, so, you know, y'all also don't speak Zulu. As a Lakewood-born, Tilikum-raised man, I am ashamed of the city council. Also, oh, I see he stepped out the room. As a truck driver myself, it's not drugs keeping the young men away. It's the low pay, the high hours, terrible trucking companies like Ed's over here or Lyle up and around the corner that don't upkeep the vehicles. So let's keep that one hundred. You get a strike if you fuck up on scale, part of my language. It's not the drugs. That's just the ignorant colonizers speaking his mind. Freedom of speech. With that, y'all need to abolish the redlining. Recertify the zones such as on 96th Street that are not allowed to vote. You know that? Does y'all know that? I can't vote for Shabon. I can't vote for Amelia. I can't vote for none of y'all. And there's two of y'all that I support up in here. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and continue. You need to go ahead and do like they said, we're gonna do it too, but build some community centers and kids' play centers in the areas that actually need them, not them rich neighborhoods. They don't need that stuff. They can afford to go elsewhere. They can afford Disneyland. I can't afford that. Can you? Any of y'all? Probably y'all make enough. Go ahead and do us one more solid, because I know you like breathing, right? Some good air in your lungs. That's one of them trees out there. So save the trees in Springbrook. They're endangered Gary Oak trees. If you don't know how to say the scientific name yet, I know I'm gonna slaughter up my damn cell. It's Quercus guriana. I like Gary Oak. It's simple enough. You need to fire the terrorist supporter, Police Chief Mike Zarro, for allowing the terrorists to remain on the force and not doing his job. Horrible. Fire and prosecute the terrorist officer, Mike Wiley, that murdered our brother, Said Joaquin. Say his name. Instead of sending these murderous police, send the Panthers as your alternative. We're a much safer option, and we genuinely love our brothers and sisters. I can't say that about those colonizers that come in with them guns, waving them, shooting them. Can you? Oh, you can't. Don't lie. And don't forget that you answer to the Peanut Gallery. All power to the people.
We'll now go to the online participants who raised their hand to speak. The first up, if available, is Pepper Luzowski. Luzowski, it's covered up there.
Hi, I am-
Hello, Pepper. I think I freed you up to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can't hear you quite yet. Can you do a test sound for us?
Hello?
I think that problem's on our end.
Hold on one second. Maybe let me try one more thing. Can you try one more time?
Hello, can you-
Oh, there we go. All righty, you're all set.
Hello, my name is Pepper Luzowski. I live in Los Angeles, California, and I am 11 years old. When I first found out about the Gary Oaks being cut down, I knew that I needed to come here and try to help stop this. Just because I live in Los Angeles doesn't mean that it doesn't affect anybody else. It affects the whole world. It affects the whole world because this will increase climate change by replacing wonderful trees with warehouses. It increases noise pollution, and without those trees, our air will not be healthy for us to breathe in. It will destroy, it will literally inhale, it will literally add health problems. It also is destroying so many helpless lives that have those trees as homes, food sources, shelter from the sun and snow, some animals that need these trees, gray squirrels, turkeys, wolves, various birds and deer. Take, please take a second to imagine one day your home being taken down. You have nowhere to go. Some of you may die in the process. All of this just for one warehouse. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next person online that's with the hand up is Shabani Uso.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
All right. So my name is Shabani Uso, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. I just want to start off by saying, Pepper, you are awesome. Thank you so much for your call. So just to touch some bases on what my peers have talked about, there's no representation in any other neighborhood but the rich neighborhoods on this city council. You guys all live close to each other. So Woodbrook, Springbrook, Oakbrook, no, none of us have representation. I think that if you don't change that by district or by area, then the council that is there now needs to pick one of those areas and represent it. And I want to talk about the tree fines. What's, what's a fine to a rich person? When we give our fines for demolishing our trees, our Gary Oak trees, it needs to send a message. Somebody suggested $1,000 per year of life for that tree, and I think that that's a great start. Also having really strict permits on all the trees and aim for a zero permit for our native Gary Oaks. They're endangered. Please reconsider the ridiculous policy allowing all the trees to be cut down on lots that are 17,000 feet or less without permits. I want to talk about Mike Wiley and Mike Zarro, who is the police chief. I spoke with Mike Zarro a few weeks back there at city council, and he told me that Mike Wiley was not back patrolling the streets. Today I found out and confirmed that that was a lie. So Michael Zarro lied to my face. Where is the public trust with the police? There is none. Also, Mayor Anderson, I want to give you a definition of peanut gallery. It is defined as the people whose opinions or criticisms are considered unimportant, insignificant, or insincere. And you called us a few weeks back. Please, you quoted, "Please quiet." You said, "Quiet in the peanut gallery." So I think that is extremely disrespectful, especially being the mayor of Lakewood. Also, there is a perfect spot in Springbrook for a recreational center for our kids. I've been told that you guys have been told about this spot for years now. There's no trees there. It would be a perfect place for our kids. And I want to respectfully give the rest of my time to honor Said Hakeen, uh, Hakeen, who was killed and murdered by Mike Zarro, May 20th, 2020. May 1st, 2020.
Thank you.
A moment of silence, please, for the remaining of my time.
You can make a comment. We don't hold time. We move to Tichamir Dunlop.
Looks like you're on mute there. Oh, there you go.
Oh, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yep.
Hello, my name is Tichamir Dunlop, and I'd like to quickly make a comment about the cutting down of Gary Oaks. One common reason people say that they should be able to cut down Gary Oaks and trees in general is that they have a right to do what they like on their own private property. This is true, but only to a point. Yes, although your property may belong to you, it's also part of the neighborhood. Things done on one's own property invariably also affect your neighbors. For example, you aren't allowed to have loud music blaring in the middle of the night. Why? It is your own private property and your own speakers after all, right? Well, although that's true, it disturbs all of your neighbors and thus isn't allowed. The same thing applies to Gary Oaks and trees in general. Yes, although they might be your trees on your property, it's not like cutting them down isn't going to have negative effects on your neighbors and community as a whole. When the trees go, habitat in the community goes, and along with it, all of the animals that gave the neighborhood life. The cool shade is replaced with searing heat in the summer. Summers get hotter. Neighbors might have to spend extra money on air conditioning. The tree line that made that particular street, but this tree line that made that particular street home for many would be gone. When you remove trees, you affect the whole community. There are limits to the rights one can have over one's own private property, and trees should be one of those limits. If we don't fix the limits to rights over private property, soon we won't have any Gary Oaks left. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Julian Wheeler.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
That's, that's too bad. Hi there. My name is Julian Wheeler, Lakewood resident. And I wanted to follow up on information that I submitted to your staff, Brianna, but I wanted to say this for the benefit of the attendees here, the constituents. I chair the Pierce County Accessible Communities Advisory Committee. We are a voluntary committee, and we are open to new members and new ideas. And we expedite funding under the Accessible Communities Act of 2010 to make communities in Pierce County more accessible. And we, we help to advance projects that are brought to us. There's an intake process. It's kind of like the effort level you get when you do a grant. And so if you engage us, we will help you out. And I wanted to suggest that, as a layman, I want to say, I know that September, October, November, that tends to be budget season. So I'm not trying to say just go through us, but if there is a project that, you know, a municipal staff advanced and doesn't make the final cut, and if that project is quite significantly one about access, physical access or other forms of access for people with disabilities and otherwise, feel free to have it recharacterized and brought to our committee. And so our next meeting is Tuesday, September 14 at 9:00. And I just want to praise the way things are being done in terms of this hybrid option. Our meeting's going to be on Zoom, as it has been for a bit over a year. And I do, I also want to thank Shabon for reading the definition of a peanut gallery. I may have referred to myself on occasion as someone in the peanut gallery. So if you guys don't mind, I'll just say that I'm in the cool kids section. But thank you very much for your personal efforts to get the word out. And, you know, I look forward to working with people here in the city and the county government as a constituent and resident. Thank you very much.
Mr. Clerk, is, has anyone else signed in on the table over there? Thank you. First, first name on the last sheet is Kyle Jollyboy, but I can't tell, it's written over yes or no whether you want to speak. If you want to speak, please step forward. Kyle Jollyboy.
To the remaining speakers, just for my benefit, could you clearly state your name and where you're from just prior to your comments, so I can get that on the record? Thank you.
If you wish to speak, please move to the podium.
My name's Kyle Jollyboys, and I'm a Tacoma resident. I moved out to Lakewood in '79. Prior to that, I was a Tacoma resident. And I went to Lurd's France to be healed because I have cerebral palsy. That's what I wanted to be healed, and I wasn't. Later on in my adult life, I found cannabis. Cannabis helped a person like me because, as you can clearly see, my arms aren't the same. And I'm really disappointed that Lakewood doesn't use cannabis as a revenue because it brings in a lot of money to Tacoma. You see, I sit on the Board of Directors for a cannabis community, and I'm a vice president. But I'm only speaking here on myself because I am a marijuana patient. And three weeks ago, I was targeted by Pierce County Sheriff Ed Troyer while I was meeting. I met Tommy Chung. And I was on the paper with him. And he took it, sheriff took this picture and ran with it, and he targeted me on Facebook. And I filed a formal complaint, and I'm filing a lawsuit to coincide with the Paper Boys lawsuit that Pierce County Sheriff targeted on January 27th, 2021. See, Lakewood and Tacoma, we're in Pierce County. And Lakewood, I grew up in Lakewood when Lakewood was in the city. My father was a businessman out in Lakewood for 40 years. He ran an insurance business. Name was Lawrence Jollyboys. Well-respected man. But you see, two weeks ago, I had long hair and a long beard. You can Google it. It's under Ed Troyer, a tax disabled man. It was down to here, but I had to shave my face for safety. And I've had to install dash cams and ring doorbells on my residents. So I just want to bring it to Lakewood City attention that marijuana is not a bad element to have in a city. You guys are losing lots of revenue. It's medicine to a lot of people. A lot of people rely on it, and they go to Tacoma to buy it. And we're not bad people. We're voters too. So I just want to let you guys know that marijuana is safer than Ed Troyer, and that was the shirt I wear. I wear a shirt that says marijuana is safer than Ed Troyer. And he got drunk and didn't like my shirt and tax it. That's not what you do to your constituents. I just want to let you know because Lakewood is my home as well. Good evening.
Next, next person signed up is Melissa Naught.
Hello. Can you hear me? Should I bend down somewhere? He's in the way. Sorry. Two Mondays ago, as we sat here-
Please, please state your name and city residence, please.
And I live in Tacoma. Two Mondays ago, as we sat here pleading with you to reconsider your plans to ravage our ecosystem and render thousands of Lakewood residents homeless by building huge warehouses in our low socioeconomic areas, the mayor called us concerned community members, the peanut gallery, which is a classist and inherently racist term. As I sat there fuming, I wondered if maybe some people on council might think we are paid actors, since council is not used to having such a large audience. Before COVID, your chambers were frequently empty, save for your Trump-loving friend that was back there earlier, that you still give time to, even though he now lives in another state. But let's be honest, he speaks the words, some of you equally Trump-loving council members, which you could say out loud. So you happily give him your time while shutting other people down. I usually speak about growing up as my mother's child, but I'm also the child of Daniel Jody Fombi. Danny was the offspring of Elizabeth and Royal W. Fombi. Roy bought a home right here off of Leona Way. He raised four kids here, Manfred, Daniel, Cynthia, and Evelyn. Roy and both of his sons were veterans of the service. Danny graduated from Clover Park High School. Some of his football trophies spent decades in the hallway display cases. He met my mother at community college while she was attending Fort Silicon on a native scholarship. My brother was born when my mother lived in Oakbrook. I went to Oakbrook Elementary for a while. My seventh birthday was at the McDonald's on Silicon Boulevard and Hipkins Road. My oldest son attended Tilikum Elementary and kindergarten. My father died living in Tilikum. My Aunt Evie died living in Lake Louise. Both my Oma and my Opa died in their home on Leona Way. My father, Oma, Opa, Aunt Cindy, and Aunt Evie are all buried at Mountain View. My pedigree has deep roots in Lakewood, just like the Gary Oak trees. I am positive, Mr. Mayor, that you cannot say the same. So while some of us might live in the cheap seats, we have more love and passion for Lakewood and its people in our little pinkies than you have in your entire elitist body. And I can assure you that we are not the paid actors here, but you are. I am not here to tell you, I am here to tell you, I am here to tell you actually, that we are not bored pieces in your little game of Monopoly. We are flesh, blood, and bone, and we will not go quietly into the night. We are growing in numbers. We are growing in numbers and I can also assure you, Mr. Mayor-
Your time is up, ma'am.
This may not be today, might not be tomorrow, but-
Your time is, your time is up, ma'am. And this is what we were talking about. Please remove her. Public comment. All the people who signed up and raise their hand, I declare public comment closed. We now move to the consent agenda, Mr. Clerk.
On the consent agenda this evening, item A, approval of the minutes of the city-
Public comment is closed, ma'am. Public comment is closed. Ma'am. Ma'am. Please. Please leave, you're disrupting the meeting. Ideas are welcome, the comment, the conduct is not. Mr. Clerk. Mr. Clerk, proceed.
Item A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of July nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Item B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one.
And item C, hey, 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 yo. Thank you.
Item C, motion number twenty-twenty-one dash fifty-eight, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with the Clover Park School District for the purchase of fuel.
Is there any matter which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Hearing that, I entertain a motion. I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Bulkey, seconded by Ms. Farmer, that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further comment, question, discussion? Will all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay, the motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda. Ordinance, ordinance number seven fifty-eight.
Mayor, please call on Planning Manager Tiffany Spear, who will join virtually.
This is ordinance number seven fifty-eight, adopting minutes title five, fourteen, fifteen, and eighteen A of the Lakewood Municipal Court. For this, we have Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Tiffany Spear here virtually this evening. I'll share my screen for a very brief presentation. The annual development regulation process, which is what is included in ordinance seven fifty-eight, starting on page eighteen of your packet this evening, is here in front of you this evening to make sure that the land use and development code remains up to date and easy to use for the public as well as staff. There are amendments included in this package this year that are based on applicant feedback, staff experience, legislative updates, and more. All of the amendments, or excuse me, most of the amendments affect title eighteen A itself, but there are also several technical amendments to five, twelve, and fourteen. There was a public hearing held by the city council on August second and no comments were submitted. A quick summary of all of the amendments that were discussed with you during the study session and then the public hearing over the last few meetings is here on the screen now. As I mentioned, most of them are within title eighteen A, but there are some scrivenor corrections to cross-references for state law and administrative sections that are needed in titles five, twelve, and fourteen. So ordinance number seven fifty-eight is included in your packet for this evening, and with that, I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Spear. Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Spear, I noticed that one of the items under definitions was an addition, a definition for multiple unit housing. And I'm wondering what spurred the need for such a definition since I wasn't able to find in eighteen A that that term is actually used.
This came from staff because of changes to state law and within the Washington Administrative Code. That is a term that's used in areas of the WACs. And so just wanting to have that term included within the city code as well, should things be referred in the future to those WAC sections. So it's something that is being done in anticipation of future code amendments.
And so how does the references in the proposed definition to transient accommodations and hotels and motels, is that sourced in a WAC?
It may well be, I'm sorry, I can't give you an answer to that specific ref, or with a specific reference right now.
So I guess that that seemed to be the whole point of the definition is related to changing the definition from the previous existing definition for multifamily housing is to make that change. Is that? So is it your understanding that the new term, multiple unit housing, is the same as the term multifamily housing?
It is generally the same, and as you look at what's proposed in the packet, what it's doing is taking the language from the existing multiple family definition and kind of combining it with some new terms as well. So it incorporates a larger definition for the term multiple unit housing. It's something that can be left as is, it's something that can be amended as suggested in the packet. Or if there's other amendments, the council may want to desire to consider that's within the council's purview.
Okay, and I guess that I am concerned because the big value of having a definition section is actually to avoid ambiguity and make the development code easy to use and universally understood. So I guess I am concerned that we don't really have a clear reference as to why the wording about hotels and motels needs to be included in a definition at this time. And I, Mr. Mayor, I know that Mr. Buhr is here in the room. Could he provide a better context for that wording change?
Mr. Buhr, do you have an explanation?
Well, I'll attempt to try to answer the question. Multiple housing here, at least in this definition, is, is trying to talk about something that's permanent. Whereas transient or hotels and motels is not permanent. You have people coming and going on a frequent basis. Multiple unit housing we refer to, for example, as apartments where you have a more stable, I mean, it's not word, but a more consistent number of tenants coming into the residence on a regular basis.
And, and Mr. Is it your understanding that, or your intent of the, the change here that it seems to be to being to apply some changes in state law that multiple unit housing is a term that needs to be defined because the state is starting to use it?
We, we get into this issue not only with the state, but also with the census. We have definitions for single-family dwelling, duplex, triplex, and more than four. And that's been sort of a standard definition, that if you've got more than four, then it's considered to be apartments or multiple family housing. Our intent here is to see if we can provide some clarification and share with the council that something different than, than transient housing and hotels and motels.
Okay, but in terms of applicability in our development code, multiple unit housing and multifamily housing are essentially the same?
Yes, it's just that people use these terms interchangeably on a regular basis.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions for Ms. Spear or Mr. Buhr? And I entertain a motion on ordinance number seven fifty-eight. So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Wayland, seconded by Ms. Melissa, we adopt ordinance number seven fifty-eight. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would move to amend the definition of multiple unit housing to read multiple unit housing, multifamily housing, and multifamily may be used interchangeably. It means a building or group of buildings having four or more dwelling units for permanent residential occupancy, not designed or used as transient accommodation, and not including hotels and motels. Multifamily units may result from new construction or rehabilitated or conversion of vacant, underutilized, or substandard buildings to multifamily housing.
Is there a second to the amendment? It's been moved and seconded to amend the definition of multiple unit housing to contain additional language as stated by Mr. Branstadter. Mr. Branstadter, to speak to your amendment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The main purpose of the amendment is not so much to change the proposed definition of multiple unit housing, but to recognize that the definition of multifamily and multifamily housing in, is being deleted from the proposed development code. And that yet those terms are frequently found in eighteen A in doing that. And to make sure that there is a context and an understanding of what those terms mean as well, given that the three terms his staff have indicated essentially mean the same thing, but that we want users of our development code to have that common understanding rather than deleting a definition of multifamily housing and leaving it open to interpretation.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the amendment? I'll call the question on the amendment. Will all in favor of the amendment please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the amendment passes. We now move to the ordinance number seven fifty-eight as amended. Are any further amendments? Any further discussion? Will all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Now move to resolutions, resolution number twenty, twenty, twenty-one dash eleven, Mr. Clerk. You're a bit, you're a bit at a disadvantage here, Jim. And we really appreciate your help tonight. This is authorizing the issuance of conditional certificate of acceptance of tax exemption within a reasonable residential target area to Lakewood Chapel LLC. For this, we have Planning Manager Courtney Brunel.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the council. This evening, we have prepared a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a conditional agreement for tax exemption for the Toto Townhomes Project. This project has been for council two times, and most recently, we presented three options for your feedback. And based on your feedback, we included option number three, which provides onsite guest parking as a reference site plan. This concludes my presentation, I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Brunel? I entertain a motion on resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Wayland, seconded by Mr. Branstadter, that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wayland.
I just want to thank staff and the applicant for working collaboratively to come up with some recommended changes. I am delighted to see that the changes came forth consistent with prior council comments, and I think it's a positive project for the benefit of the community and will increase affordable housing in Lakewood. So thank you, we're working together collaboratively on this.
I'd like to echo the deputy mayor's comments, appreciate the collaborative effort recognizing an issue and trying to correct it in a very positive and productive way. Any further discussion? Call for the question then, will all in favor of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. We now move, thank you, Ms. Brunel. We now move to unfinished business, is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
Any new business to come before the council?
No, Mayor.
Then we move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call upon our housing manager, Jeff Gumm, to provide the council with an update on our abatement program. Mr. Gumm?
Mr. Gumm, I guess for, this is deja vu all over again from-
Yes, it is. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to share my screen and go through the presentation for you tonight and kind of show you where we are with the abatement program. Bring up my screen here. All right. Well, I'll see, hopefully the presentation's up there. Looks like it is. So I kind of wanted to, it's been a little while since I've been before the council and gone through the abatement program, so I wanted to do a little bit of a recap and show you where we kind of got to last year in twenty twenty as well as where we are in twenty twenty-one and some of the projects that we've completed and we're working on. So in twenty twenty, staff completed sixteen dangerous buildings, twelve of them, or sorry, sixteen abatement projects, twelve of them were dangerous, two were nuisance, and two did involve tenant relocation. So buildings that were determined to be unsafe, that tenants had to be relocated from. This year in twenty twenty-one, we've completed eight projects. Actually, we've completed nine projects. The nice thing about putting these things together and having things move along is my numbers are wrong sometimes. So we've actually had a project that was recently completed. And the owner was responsible for that. Whoops, sorry. The projects that we're working on right now, we've got twenty-one projects in the queue. Twenty of those are dangerous building and one is a nuisance abatement project. So the, the, kind of the vast majority of those sixteen are under an abatement order. And five of those are in the abate, sorry, the complaint process under the abatement process. So there's, there's two steps, there's filing findings and complaint, and then there's filing an abatement order. So the complaint is kind of the start and the abatement order is the finish of the process. Kind of shows where we are in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one with completed projects, ongoing projects. They're, they're kind of scattered about the city for the most part. It's something that has kind of been the trend as the project has gone on. Early on, they were kind of clustered in certain areas and, and as we've done this over the years, they've, they've kind of started to spread out and, and cover throughout the city. The red projects are kind of the ones we're working on and focusing on trying to get done. And then the yellow circles are ones that we're, we're monitoring and potentially moving up the, the cycle as they, they come needing- And then the yellow circles are ones that we're, we're monitoring and potentially moving up the, the cycle as they, they come needing to be done. Some things that, that we've noticed in the last few years. Um, I wanted to kind of go through some of the, some of the key factors that this shows abatements through two thousand fifteen through twenty-one. So over this cycle, the abatement numbers of abatements are fairly consistent. There was one year, two thousand and eighteen, where there was a spike in abatements. It's partially because owners were addressing the projects and partially because the city was able to um, kind of get some of the projects that were in the queue through and, and completed. But the one thing that, that kind of stands out in all of these slides is the, uh, numbers of squatters. It's, it's a fairly consistent fifty percent of the units that we're dealing with through the dangerous building process involve squatters and, and that continues to this year as well. So we're looking at about half of them with squatters in those buildings. The, the other thing to notice would be that, uh, fires and bank-owned properties have decreased completely. So we haven't had any at all bank-foreclosed properties nor any properties that have had fires. So kind of a good thing, I guess, fires. Nobody wants those on the property. So that's, that's kind of one, one good note. But unfortunately, squatters tend to be the, the one continuing factor we see. And I'm not certain if anybody can hear me because my computer, for some reason, has decided to freeze. So I will just continue the presentation and hopefully it unfreezes at some point in time. Where we're at with abatement, um, in two thousand and twenty, we completed one oh five oh six Bridgeport Way. It was a multifamily complex. It had a number of bridgeways that were failing, a number of decks that were failing. Um, this is a, a unit of about twenty-four apartment complexes with commercial below. So the units are on the second floor for the most part. There was all kinds of structural damage that the contractor repaired. The back wall of the structure on this building was completely rotted and deteriorated. The owner came in and replaced all that, got building permits, uh, redid the structure, fixed all the exteriors on this, um, a deck that you can see on the, the property. The front of it, uh, was, was taped off and caution taped specifically because the deck was, was unsafe. There was a hole in the deck there and unsafe for residents to use. You can see the repaired on the right. For the properties that we addressed last year, nuisance abatement, um, many of you are aware of this property. It was, uh, on forty-seventh Avenue in the Springbrook neighborhood. It was cleaned up last year. It has since been purchased by the city and is now part of the Springbrook Park. Um, another property, fifty-five oh nine Boston Avenue, again in the Springbrook neighborhood. This was a, a property that had a fire, multiple fires, um, was, was partially collapsed. The owner stepped in and demolished this building and it's now a vacant site. Um, three contiguous parcels, I, I kind of lumped them together in, in the Woodbrook neighborhood, sixty-four nineteen, sixty-four twenty-two, one forty-six oh one. Um, all of those had dangerous structures. They were all torn down and that property is now being redeveloped as a multifamily property, or sorry, a commercial property with industrial development ongoing. Um, eighty-two oh three thirty-second Avenue. This was a property that we addressed, a multi, uh, sorry, a trailer that had caught on fire in a park. Was left that way for a number of months, about five or six months. It, it took a while for the owner to remove this thing. One of the things that we're noticing, I guess, right now kind of goes to some of the challenges that we're seeing with COVID is owners of properties being able to hire competent contractors in a timely manner. So it's, it's something that's kind of a bit of a challenge. Um, once we identify it as dangerous and, and the owners are ready to take it down, there is a lag right now of, of trying to get somebody in there and actually address it and tear it down. So unfortunately, we're, we're seeing a little bit of that. Abatement's completed in twenty twenty-one. Uh, you see a property, this was a code enforcement property. It was, was dealt with a at eighty-two third, or sorry, eighty-three twenty Mount Tacoma Drive, what used to be the old Ken's Tires. Um, this was a property that code enforcement identified. It had a number of dangerous structures. They were vacant for the most part. There was all kinds of abuses and graffiti all over this and, and code enforcement followed this property up, was able to get the owner to demolish it. And now you have a, a view of what is now the Hess's Bakery kind of behind there. It's, it's would have been fronting on Gravelly Lake Drive, the building that was torn down. Another one, eighty-four thirteen Veterans Drive. Um, this property has a single-family house. There were squatters in it. It had a number of, of police calls and violations. It was boarded up. The owners since remodeled it and sold it to a single-family home buyer. So it's been returned to the market. Uh, property that the, the building official was able to address in probably in the last two to three weeks. It was a one, one fifty fifteen Union Avenue Southwest uh, property that had squatters in it. You can see the building is completely filled with garbage and debris. It was an old concrete masonry building. Uh, it did front I five. The owner since tore that building down. Uh, nuisance property that we've been dealing with for a little while is hundred and sixteen eighteen Pack Highway. Um, it had abandoned cars, junk vehicles, all kinds of things. The owner stepped in, cleaned all of that, um, fenced the property off, and it has since sold to somebody else. Another nuisance property that we're working on now, unfortunately, it doesn't have an address. It's, uh, right off of I five and Seattle Avenue. So that where the highway exit ramp is, it's directly to the south of that. There was a vacant lot. It, it had a number of vehicles, overgrown vegetation, tractors, all kinds of things. So the owner has since cleaned that up a little bit. There's still a few things we're working on to get that, but it's primarily addressed. One twenty-six thirty-two Lincoln Avenue Southwest. It's a nuisance property. The owner of this property had roughly twenty-five, twenty-six cars, um, a couple of RVs and, and just a bunch of um, abandoned vehicles that were, that were junk, um, or inoperable on this property. So he has since taken, um, action and cleaned up primarily all of those vehicles. Again, there's a, a two or three that we're still working, trying to get removed. So the owners complied with that one. Another property that was addressed was on Military Road, one sixteen fourteen Military Road Southwest was an old um, property that had nuisance issues with junk, inoperable vehicles as well as property maintenance and so forth. That, this property has since been addressed. It's, I believe, currently for sale on the market now. So it's, there was a, a number of repairs that they did. They, they got permits and, and turned this property around pretty quickly. Um, active abatements. That should say ninety-three fourteen to ninety-three thirty Bridgeport Way. It's the old QFC building and strip mall, one of the ongoing properties that the city of Lakewood has. It's a, a fairly large commercial property. The owners are working to address that property. Legal has been working with their legal department, or our legal department has been working with their legal staff, um, trying to get these things addressed. So we are, are still working this property, not necessarily as active as, as we once were. The, the building will hopefully be addressed soon. Um, twenty-six twenty-one eighty-fourth Street Southwest is Carwan Mobile Home Park. Um, this is a, a fairly large mobile home park that the staff is working to address. There's a number of carports that need to come down. There's a number of stick buildings that need to be addressed, um, some nuisance issues and so forth. The owner for this has tested the carports that, that we need them to address and they applied for permits, I believe, last week. And I think they are issued as of today to tear down a number of carports. So that is a, a property that also has sewer and septic issues. So primarily septic. The, the city right now, we are out to bid for the septic systems on this property to address them. Um, and are looking for bids from septic contractors to assess that, and we will evaluate those as to whether the septic needs to be repaired or replaced. Uh, once we, once we get those results, we can then finish the bidding process and get this project done. It's realistically, uh, uh, probably a sixty-day project, maybe ninety days, um, somewhere in that ballpark to get this thing going. Unfortunately, it's, it's a fairly large project. Um, and looking in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to get this addressed. So it's, it's unfortunately a large, large money project. One of the other projects that we're looking at is, or sorry, one of the other buildings we're looking at on this project is the, the main building itself. The roof was, was built without permits. The structure's been modified. It's collapsing in multiple areas. It's, it's kind of a, a bit of a mess, but one of the things we're looking at as well would be the old Denny's Building. This had a fire in the back of the building. Permits have since been applied for. It's been repaired on the exterior. They're working on the interior now. Another property, eighty-four ten South Tacoma Way, that we're currently working with the owner to obtain permits. All of the structures that you can see, there's five individual houses. All of those are, are looking to be demolished by the owner, and this is, uh, going to be a vacant property that I believe he's intending to sell once he gets them down. Uh, single-family house in the Tillicum neighborhood, eighty-six oh two and eighty-six oh four. They share a garage. This garage, you can see it's kind of crashed up a little bit. A, a car actually crashed into the, the structure itself. Wiped out one of the walls. As you see, the owners have since fixed that wall and they're, they're working on addressing some other issues. So this, this may be a property that we don't necessarily have to abate. The owners are going to address, hopefully, or working with them. Um, one that I'm actively working with property management company of eighty-eight one one three Sherwood Forest. This has a structure on the back. It's a, a storage shed that was built illegally. It's about ready to collapse and fall down. It's completely full of junk and debris. Um, the house itself has some issues with the garage and so forth that remain under abatement order. Seven one one ninth Foster Street Southwest. It's a, a single-family house. The, the structure that what we're looking at is the garage. The garage itself has numerous modifications. It was modified into a living space without permits. The inside is, is quite typical to what we see. There's a large amount of garbage, trash, debris and so forth inside of the house. Um, the owner's working on cleaning that up, obtaining permits to return it to a garage. Uh, one-two-three-one-four Pacific Highway Southwest. Uh, it's a commercial structure. This one was recently bought within the last week and a half, maybe two weeks, the property closed. Um, this had squatters in the property. It's been boarded up for a number of months. Um, the inside is pretty well deteriorated. The roof is failing. It's, it's got all kinds of electrical issues. But the owner has said that they are working on fixing it and they're working on getting permits to do so. Uh, seventy-four oh seven to seventy-four oh nine hundred and forty-six. This is in the Woodbrook neighborhood. This property was a single-family, um, in the city, or sorry, in the Woodbrook neighborhood. It had a, probably the worst property I've seen since I've worked here. Um, this property had at least five acres of garbage piled throughout the property. I mean, there was cars, there was, um, all kinds of trailers built or, uh, like storage trailers that you would get from like shipping containers and so forth, filled with garbage, just garbage piled everywhere. Um, number of cars that were stolen were found on this property. You, you name it, this property had it. Um, the owner has since worked on this property, boarded it up, is in the permitting process to get it addressed. Um, trying to get this thing cleaned up so it's, it's properly fixed. Um, and I, I honestly haven't been by this for about a week and a half, but building department says they, they're about halfway through with permits. So we'll see how this one turns out. Five seventy-three Lake Louise Drive. This is a property that, uh, I'm certain that many of you council members are aware of. It's a, a property orders Lake Louise. So it's, it's a single-family house. It's been left vacant and abandoned for a number of years. The roof is failing. Um, the back deck is collapsing, the, the interiors. The only way I can describe it is it's melting really from the water that's, that's running into this house from the roof and mold conditions throughout. It's, it's completely unhealthy and unsafe. So the owner's daughters are working on this property to address the issues. And I did see something in my email come through today, tonight about permits for this. So I know they're, they're working on obtaining permits. Um, seventy-one twenty-seven hundred and fiftieth Street Southwest. This is a property that is a multifamily apartment complex. It's the old Rowan Apartments, which I believe is called Oak Meadows now. There's twenty-six buildings on this property. A number of them have already been destroyed. This is the, a view of a number of the buildings in a, a community center that not really a community center, it's an old pool house basically that, uh, caught on fire. The contractor has since torn that building down, the one dead center in the photo. Um, another building on the property that you can see, it's been kind of left vacant and abandoned and all kinds of debris. Two buildings, one on the left and one on the right. Both of these had fires in the last, uh, month. I believe last week there was two fires on this property. Both of these structures have since been torn down. Um, and I believe when I was out there on Thursday, the contractor has eight or nine of the twenty-six buildings down and is working on cleaning that property up. So it's a, a large property. One twenty-five twenty-one Addison Street Southwest. Um, this is a single-family house. The, the issue that we have with this one, unfortunately, I couldn't get on the property to, to take a better photo. But behind the truck is a, a garage that was converted to living space, uh, without permits. And there was a number of, of structures that were added on this thing without permits. So the, the owner, the new owners of this property bought it about, say, three months ago. They've applied for permits. They have them and are working on tearing the legal structures down as well as returning the garage to a garage. Uh, nuisance property. This is kind of the typical nuisance property that we see. There's a number of abandoned. Uh, this one, I won't say typical. This is probably an extreme typical. This has a, a number of abandoned vehicles, junk vehicles. There's, there's garbage. You can see the sticks and so forth on it. This, this something that we see often on these properties. Another property, it's a kind of the twin to Lake Louise. It's fifty-five oh one hundred and sixteen Street Southwest. Uh, I don't typically see buildings that are exactly the same, but this one is, is exactly the same. The, the roof has failed. It's been left vacant for a number of years. The roof has failed. Um, the interior is completely filled with water. The this, the in, inside is full of mold and rot and debris. The deck has fallen off of the back and it's there's the back of the house. The other one on Lake Louise, the deck is fairly similar, not maybe in, in such a state of decay, but reasonably similar. Um, seventy-three oh one hundred and fiftieth is a property in Woodbrook that, that I am working on currently. Um, it does not have an order yet, but it's a, a property that had a fire recently. We're working to get this one written up and addressed. Probably one of the worst properties I've seen in a little while. Um, this is thirty-four oh seven eighty-six Street South. This has clearly, you can see it's been graffitied all over it. This had a, a structure fire. Uh, we posted it unsafe. The owner sold it to a new individual who proceeded to attempt to fix things without building permits, made it worse. Um, so it's since boarded up and, and this is moving to abatement, probably relatively quickly once we get going on this one. Uh, property that you're all well aware of is fifty-four oh eight Silicon Boulevard, the old, uh, Lotus House Restaurant, the, the building. It's been a, a kind of an eyesore for a number of years. It's been boarded up for the last probably five years. It's full of graffiti. There's the, you can see the front door has a, a black square in the, in the door. That's actually a panel that's kicked out and squatters are, are in and out of this property. It's been a, a huge issue for police. It's been a huge issue for code enforcement and, and myself. So one of the properties we're working on. That is what I have for my presentation, and I hope you all heard because for some reason my computer is not letting me hear what I need to hear. Um, so I, with that, I, I'd like to return it back to council and, and see if you, if you heard my presentation because as I mentioned, for some reason, my computer froze up during that and I didn't hear a word.
We, we heard it very well.
Oh, thank you.
Just for Wayland.
Thank you, Mr. Gumm. Can you hear me?
I, I can now. My computer's working.
Very good. Well, thank you for the report. My only question is, uh, what do you have by way of budgeted monies for code enforcement in twenty twenty-one going into twenty twenty-two? Kind of where are we? Because it looks like you're incredibly busy.
Good, good question. That's something that, that I was going to include, but I wanted to make sure you heard me first. So the, the ending fund balance for twenty twenty, we ended with, um, eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and one dollars. Since then, um, the largest expenditure I, I just recently spent was for the, the seventy-one twenty-seven hundred and fiftieth. We spent about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a demo on that project. Um, there's about, I'd have, I don't know the number off the top of my head, about forty-five to fifty thousand dollars. So Um, there's about, I'd have, I don't know the number off the top of my head, about forty five to fifty thousand dollars, so we've spent about a hundred and sixty of the eight sixty five, so we're realistically looking about seven hundred thousand dollar fund balance right now. Um, the the biggest projects moving forward is is going to be the Car One Mobile Home Park. Um, depending on how the sewer assessments come back, or sorry, the septic assessments come back. That could be a two hundred thousand dollar project, it could be a four hundred thousand dollar project. Um, the nice thing is, is the owner has stepped up and is working on the abatement of the carports and some of the other issues, so some of the some of the costs are going to be borne by the owner and and not the city upfront. Um, the other projects, realistically, depending on what happens with the QFC, um, that again, that could be a project of of the same value, so it it kind of depends on the the large scale commercial projects that we're doing and and what comes forward and and what the owners are able to address. Right, right now, as I'm and seeing projects move forward and and owners deal with projects, I I believe there's enough in the abatement fund to get us through um, twenty twenty one into twenty twenty two pretty easily. Um, we've we've had really good compliance with homeowners and and property owners, as as you could see in the the slides that we showed it, the showed the current trends and so forth. The the last two years, the city is, as we've we've demolished or addressed, sorry, two uh buildings a year, that's that's kind of good results, I mean, if if we're looking at sixteen to twenty buildings and we're only doing two of them. Um, I I hope that trend continues and I see that trend continuing this year. The the kind of the projects that we have in the queue with the the twenty one that we're working on. A majority of those will also be owner addressed, I've I've talked with most of those owners, they're aware of their properties and they're and they're looking to address them themselves, so it's there's a lot of properties that are kind of lagging just due to construction issues and contractor issues, but I think the fund is in a in a good place and I I think we can accomplish what we're looking to accomplish with our active projects right now.
So Jeff, on the flip side of the coin, what do you have in the receivables bucket from city initiated and completed abatement that have liens that may pay off in the next couple of years that you're monitoring?
There have actually been a number that have paid us back, so the the receivables have actually gone down considerably, we we actively have I will tell you the number. Um, it's been drastically reduced, the last time I looked at, we had I believe six or seven um properties that are that we have liens on. And they're fairly small dollars, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, we have seven properties. Um, most of them are queued up to to pay back, not in twenty twenty two, but twenty twenty three and and beyond. But they're all fairly small liens in the in the low thousands to twenty four, twenty five thousand, I think is about the biggest lien we have. So there's there's not a not a huge amount of monies coming back, last year, we received almost a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars back, um, and most of those were paybacks uh ahead of schedule, so we did get a a decent payback last year.
And then the my final question, this may be a question for Mr. Buhr, um, or or Mr. Coffield. You know, if council was inclined, are any of the ARPA funds capable of being used for this in low income neighborhoods for abatement work or not, I don't know, I don't think so, but I didn't know if one time monies like that might be utilized.
Deputy Mayor Whalen, I I, we don't believe so.
Yeah.
This is a regular routine program that we have, it's not something that was either positively or negatively impacted by COVID, so I would have to say it would be a pretty significant stretch. Um, however, you are gonna get an update on the ARPA program next week and um, it's likely you'll have a longer list of needs than you will funding, so.
Got it, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, thanks Jeff.
Uh, follow up to that, w- we do have the ability, do we not, to make an interfund loan with the liens as a source of payback, you know, if we run short on that fund during the year?
Um, so yes, Mayor, um, if we ever had a need to do that, we would be able to do that, thus far, um, we haven't, as uh Mr. Gum pointed out, we have a fairly substantial fund balance within the account right now, but again, if we had the need we would do that, or we would simply come back to you and request that general government monies be simply transferred into the account to accommodate what the need is. I would also like to point out that this is probably the healthiest that this account has been from a financial standpoint in a good number of years, and I would just echo Mr. Gum's approach in that if you just go back three or four years ago, um, many of the abatements were um, being funded by the city and then us seeking reimbursement, but because of Mr. Gum and his team and how he approaches this program the the property owners now know it's in their best interest to do it themselves because at the end of the day, it actually costs them less, um, than if the city was to do it and then place a lien on their property.
So I hope one other thought on with respect to Car One Village specifically, ARPA funds and and the like. Uh, I think we recognize that we can't force uh sewer hookups on mobile home parks because of state law as kind of a zoning or regulatory matter, however, it could be an alternative if the costs are close to uh building a sub- substantial uh septic system to replace the failed systems. So there may be some leverage there, combined with the ability to use ARPA funds for sewer improvements. And the fact that the county may have some funds for sewer improvements out of its ARPA money, so we have our ARPA money potentials, county ARPA money and leverage, maybe we could make uh a a cooperative arrangement with the owner to better improve the property for the long haul. So, just option. Um, Mr. Branstadter.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mr. Gum, uh you showed a slide that showed the, that about half of the properties that you are working with at least uh have uh squatter activity. That and I know you have the tools to deal with the buildings and the properties and being able to go and do that. Um, what tools do you have or do you and do you have adequate tools to deal with the existence of squatters?
Uh, another good question, that's, that tends to be a bit of a challenge. Um the way that the the RCWs are set up for dangerous buildings is in order for us to access property. There's a couple of ways, um, if you go through the the typical dangerous building abatement process, a a warrant is needed to be obtained in order for us to enter the property, so you you go through the filing process and and get to a warrant once we were at the end. Um, we could get an emergency warrant onto a property if if for some reason there was a squatter in there and and there was an an extreme fire risk or or an extreme risk to the public from the from the property that they had caused. Um, that process unfortunately hasn't been as easy to to address right now, we've we've with COVID, the courts have been kind of backed up, so it's been harder to get in there. Um, that's, it's, it is a little bit of a challenge with squatters and and trying to, one, respect property rights and two, understand that the the public's protection is is paramount for the city as well as protecting property rights, we kind of balance the two and and sometimes we kind of get pushed up uh against a wall a little bit and and find it a little challenging to get into these properties and and get into the courts and get access to them, the we're not able to go in and and board them up, um, probably as readily as I would like to, um, only because we have to follow uh, as you all know, I mean, we're a nation of laws, there's things that I can and can't do, I'd love to get in there and board these things up, but without a warrant, um, I I I'm kind of hamstrung a little bit, so there is a little bit of a lag when there's somebody in there and they're causing some issues, we have to, we have to follow the legal channels, um and get our staff to get a warrant for us and and they have been really good at that, um, Ms. McCain has been fantastic, she's she's kind of uh at the spearhead on many of these things and she's always asking, say, let me know what I need to do, so we can get them, but it it it's one thing that is challenging squatters.
So, is there anything, and I understand a lot of the rules you're dealing with there come from other levels of government. But is there anything that, any tool that the council could legislatively create for you that would help?
Um, I would, I would have to defer to legal to answer that one, I I'm not certain what what we could do on a city level versus what's allowed under RCW, that's that's a good question.
And in your work, um, which of our advisory committees uh assists you?
Uh, for the most part, uh, it's the, I always forget it, the Public Safety Advisory Committee, there we go, um. So I I haven't presented to them for a little while, but I do have a presentation that I'm hoping to do in the next next month or two to to kind of go through what we went through tonight with you all as well, so.
Okay, and then one last question in terms of squatters in your chart didn't ref- wasn't reflective of number of squatters, it was reflective of number of properties that had squatter activity. What you're sensing about the demographic of squat, of the of the squatters in the in in the city as opposed to the demographic of the city in general?
Um, we, I don't necessar- well some of this, I guess, would be a little bit of conjecture, I, we don't, I don't necessarily see all of the properties with squatter and squatter in the, the properties that I have, I'd say um, roughly half of them, I'm able to to go in with the police and and actually identify people that are there and and the police detain them and and talk to them and let them know they can't be there, it's, it seems of those properties I'm seeing, it's a majority of of white males, they tend to be in the twenty five to thirty five-ish category, so kind of early on in life, there's, there's been a few in recent years where there's, there's been multiple people in there, so the demographics that I've seen are kind of the same, it's it's the same uh middle aged, younger, white males, um, there have been some some females accompanying accompanying them in these properties, but it's primarily single individuals in in properties that that move from one to another. Uh, we haven't, we haven't encountered a lot of properties with groups of squatters, uh maybe one or two over the years, I've seen a a large number of people, say, four or five in a building, it it tends to be um, single white individuals that are are in each building separately.
So it does not seem like it is a, an issue of families finding shelter?
No, not at all.
Okay, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The other question is for Mr. Gum, Ms. Farmer.
So it sounds like you have twenty one projects in the queue, do you expect to complete those by the end of the year, or if you had a crystal ball?
I'm hopeful to, some of the, some of the larger ones like the QFC and Car One, um, Denny's, the the commercial ones take a little bit longer. Um I would say that the dangerous conditions will be addressed, the projects themselves may not be finished, but the elimination of the dangerous conditions on most of those will be addressed. Um, I typically don't consider something done, I mean, if if there's a house that's got a a roof that's collapsing and they and they, there's other issues, I I don't necessarily call them done until the the project has passed its final inspection, so the dangerous building conditions are addressed maybe in the year, but but I don't consider it done, I, looking forward, I would say if I if I had a crystal ball um, realistically, three quarters of those I think can be done in this year. So I mean, we'd be looking at, say, fifteen, sixteen of those on top of what we've already done, and and again, most of those are are homeowners that are already addressing them and and have already kind of at least half of those are kind of somewhere in the getting permits and moving through the process, so I I think that's realistic.
That's impressive, thank you, and I was curious about the Denny's property. Uh, we were just discussing that that it, that's been fairly slow. Is that fairly typical of a commercial property or?
It it is, that one, it it didn't really show on the outside, the kind of the devastation on the, from the fire on the inside, the inside of that structure had the entire back of it, which is the kitchen and commercial area, was just about completely destroyed, so I mean, they were, they were looking at completely redoing the electrical system, the the plumbing system, the commercial kitchens, the range hoods, I mean, that's a it's a fairly extensive remodel and those types of things, especially now, just trying to get some of those equipment pieces is is kind of hard. So, it's, that one's a little longer than normal, but the what they're repairing is a little bit atypical and and very expensive.
I'm glad to hear it's active, thank you.
Yeah, what, I guess, one thing that I can throw in really quickly and then I'll, I see Dave, Mr. Buhr up there, so one thing that I found interesting this last year that I I think you would appreciate is over all of the years that we've been doing this I have never once until this year received a call from an attorney working and representing a bank, so this year three times, on three occasions, Bank of America was involved in properties where their owners um needed to address issues. Um, their attorneys attended our our abatement hearings, their attorneys followed up with me to see where their properties are, they're still following up with me, so it is kind of interesting that that Bank of America, unfortunately, they had a number of properties that were demolished um by us over the years. But the message has gotten out and and Bank of America gives me a call now and we send a a notice to them, they they follow up pretty, pretty quickly, so it's it's kind of nice to see.
Yeah, there's, there's a side note to that, Bank of America inherited a a portfolio where the titles were all unclear. And they also had a subsidiary uh that was a captive for a courtship trustee and those those titles were all unclear, so they they just backed off for a substantial period of time, so it's, it's good to hear that they're engaged. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gum, for all you do, uh, you've got your hands full, but uh, that is a particularly popular program and uh I have no doubt that council will continue to support it financially, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, back to you, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor, um, just a few more updates, I think as uh everybody's aware, there's been a pretty significant increase in COVID nineteen cases and given all of that here at the City of Lakewood effective Wednesday, so Mr. Speer, you're you're actually pretty good, you're good. Um, we um are gonna require masks to be worn in all city facilities, again, that will begin on Wednesday. Uh, likewise, guests coming into city facilities will be required to wear a mask as well. Um, Western State Hospital, so um, our team has been having some conversations with DSHS, including with um their secretary about um conducting some open houses with our community, so um, at this point in time, we've agree- agreed upon at least two open houses or public meetings. Um, the first one would be um an actual open house in person, and the second one would potentially be a virtual meeting. Um, the first open house, um, last week, we had earlier last week, we had come to an agreement on place and location and such, however, they then came back because of COVID that they're now looking at perhaps having the meeting still be a public meeting, but in an outdoor setting in an area still to be determined, and uh, so um, we hope to have that daytime and location hopefully finalized by um the end, the end of this week, if not sooner, and so as soon as we know, we'll be sure to share that with with the council. Um, as we look out into twenty twenty two this is the time of the year, we begin to pull together an update to our state and federal legislative priorities as well as um fine tuning our 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 county, our our county priorities. And um, so uh typically, as this council's aware, you typically have a half day retreat usually on a Saturday in October. Um, however, uh, we are having some challenges in fri- finding a uh Saturday, actually there is no Saturday available right now for the council in October, so now we're looking at um either a Wednesday or maybe now a Thursday. I know on Friday I had sent out some some dates. Um, unfortunately, those don't work for several of you, so we're gonna have to come back and uh reset that, so um, I'll probably be reaching out to you here in the near future to identify again either a Thursday or a Wednesday sometime in early to mid October, if the council's so inclined again to get together to have some kind of a half day or legislative uh retreat, you know, perhaps beginning at six PM or 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 so, so more more to follow on that. Um, also wanted to point out just some um key initiatives that Association of Washington, uh Washington Cities is pursuing as it relates to their update on their citywide legislative agenda, as it relates to their representation of all two hundred and eighty one cities and towns in the state. as it relates to their update on their citywide legislative agenda as it relates to their representation of all 281 cities and towns in the state. I think, as you know, I serve on that legislative committee. Some of the key items that AWC is looking at supporting is a transportation revenue package. Also trying to get some clarification on some of the recent confusion regarding some of the recent police reform bills as well as seeking financial assistance for body cameras and also continued funding and support of the Criminal Justice Training Commission on some training opportunities there. In addition, also AWC is considering and, you know, discussing requesting funding in support of the Blake decision that will provide the necessary resources to local courts, including municipal courts, to address some of the impacts of, of, of that decision that, that occurred earlier this year. On the Open Public Meetings Act, AWC is still discussing, supporting a bill that was actually introduced last session that would permanently allow local governments such as this body to hold virtual meetings during an emergency rather than doing it just during, you know, having, having the government declare an emergency or a local emergency. You would simply just be allowed to do it outright in the RCW, which quite frankly, just makes things a whole lot more efficient. Aside from transportation funding, general infrastructure funding and AWC is considering requesting funding from the state through their ARPA monies, the state is receiving a sizable amount of monies there that some of that money be made available for cities to maintain basic non-transportation infrastructure, particularly water, sewer and stormwater. Also considering supporting a program that would support the creation of a construction workforce such as apprenticeships and things like that, given the, the lack of available construction workers throughout, throughout the state. Something that's new, but not new, because I remember this from a number of years ago, is AWC is also considering supporting a state-sponsored, essentially a bank, a financing cooperative that would provide lower finance interest rates than perhaps your, you know, our local banks or financial institutions could, could provide. There's also some Growth Management Act bills that AWC is, is tracking, but really the crux of the issue there is making sure that local government has the planning monies, the financing to be able to move forward with implementing any changes, whether it's in the area of climate change or salmon recovery or things like that. So again, local governments have the financial capability to be able to address that. And then lastly, broadband, AWC continues to have a discussion on broadband efforts primarily or, you know, particularly in some of the rural and areas of, of our state that do not have direct access to broadband. And also creating a dedicated funding source for that as opposed to using the Public Works Trust Fund loan, which is the current mechanism right now that's, that's, that's in place. So just wanted to give you, give you a heads up on that. On the city side, Transportation Grants, Transportation Improvement Board, Mr. Bucic, our Public Works Engineering Director, did submit four applications last week. The JBLM North Phase Two Project, Custer between Bridgeport and 75th, and then a couple of smaller sidewalk projects, 59th from Bridgeport to 100th, and then the missing link on Silicon Boulevard between Weller and 80, 83rd. So hopefully, knock on wood, we get funding for at least one of those, maybe even, even two. I do want to commend Mr. Bucic and his team because one of the things that they did, and they do this actually every year, and not all cities and towns take advantage of it. They actually invited TIB personnel to come out and tour the city and to actually review the projects that we were considering seeking funding for. And if you ask, they will provide feedback in terms of how well they think that your, your, your application will, will, will be considered. And so again, the projects that we submitted were, the feedback we got from TIB personnel was very, very positive. So while at the end of the day, it is the board that will make the decision, we're feeling pretty good in terms of the, the projects we did submit. One of the things that we were hoping to hear on Friday was from, regarding the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, DCIP, our $5.1 million ask. We have not heard from them, which means it is perhaps likely that we are not being considered for, for that, for that federal grant. So we are still following up with whatever OEA, Office of Economic Adjustment, I think it's called OCDC or whatever it's called, whatever OEA is called. So we're following, following up with them to find out where, where, where exactly, where exactly we are. And then also a huge shout out to our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dodsworth. We were notified last week that the City of Lakewood was one of 19 in all of the United States to receive funding in the Outdoor Recreation Legacy Partnership Grant Program. You might recall this from the budget presentations last fall. And this is a million dollars that is in support of Ward's Lake Park. And so this is actually the last missing piece. We were actually anticipating a half a million, either coming from the state or a million coming from the feds. And Mary was able to secure the million coming from the feds. So this more than completes the financing for that project, which is now under, under design. And hopefully sometime in 2022, we'll be able to initiate construction on, on that project. So with that, that's my report, Mayor.
Could you go back and restate your comment about OEA, now known as OLDDCC? Between my hearing and your mask, I couldn't catch it.
Sure, sure, Mayor. We have not heard back from them, whether or not we are moving on to the next round for our grant, the DCIP grant for the JBLM North Project, the last phase, which is Washington Boulevard. They had notified all the applicants that if you were going to move forward, we would know by Friday. And so we haven't heard. And so at this point in time, we're assuming that we did not get it, but we're following up with them. So that's, that's what we're waiting on. The only thing I can think of is because that organization requires feedback and input from the Pentagon. And given what was going on last week and what's happening in Afghanistan, it could be perhaps that it's been delayed. That's, that's the other item that could be out there, that could be out there.
Yeah, there, I, I think the actual deadline is September.
So Mayor.
And they anticipated that this would be the week that news would come out. But I received an email from the Legislative Committee for Association of Defense Communities yesterday, and they didn't say anything about this.
That, that's correct. Though last, last year, when they did this, what they notified all the applicants would happen on August 13th is that those that are moving forward in the process would be notified on August 13th. So you're right, Mayor, the decision is the end of, end of September. And so at this point in time, we just, we just don't know. So either they've been delayed on their end or we're not being asked to move forward. But again, as soon as we hear, we'll let you know.
Any questions? Ms. Farmer.
On the OPMA change that AWC is seeking, would that be something that they would request a letter of support? Or would we simply add it to our legislative agenda to show that we were in?
Actually, Councilmember Farmer, I believe it already is in your legislative policy manual. And if it's not, it's probably something that we would add in there. Also, there was a bill that was dropped last session on this. It's actually 1056 on the, on the House.
Any other questions for Mr. Caulfield? Hearing none, but anything further, Mr. Caulfield?
No, Mayor.
And we'll go to council comments before executive session. Ms. Moss.
I knew I'd be first, so I pushed my button. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, just in a little bit about the comments tonight from public comment. We understand that our youth are struggling in Lakewood for a place to go. We've been working with this now for some time. So if there's anything that, if we come up with some suggestions or ideas that we can bring forward. I thought about Heritage Park, that's more or less for the younger group. So in our parks, we do the best we can to have entertainment there. But I don't know what youth want today as far as entertainment or where they want to go and that kind of thing. So if we can come together and come up with some ideas that maybe can spear something to happen in our city of our youth, I would appreciate that. Just a thought. And the other thing I wanted to say was on the Title 18A, what is it, Title 18A? When you talked about the definition for affordable housing, I just want to say thank you for that definition. It makes it easier to explain now to people when they ask, what do you consider affordable housing? And it's easy to say 30% of the total household monthly income is good. So thanks for that definition, whoever came up with that. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bulkey.
Mr. Bradsterry. One of the things that I've had some conversations about with folks who centers around the fact that there's no water flowing in Clover Creek at the moment. And that that presents an opportunity to clean up years of trash. Then that's a, probably something that's going to, an opportunity that's going to last a few weeks. But that we as a city ought to try to look to try to incentivize volunteers to be working on that and taking a look about what logistical support we could provide, similar to the support we provide to adopt a street groups and things like that. In terms of, if you get the trash and you get it someplace, then we'll get it from there to a final place to do that. And I know Mr. Ott has been in on some of the emails about how that could, could, could happen. And some of the folks who are property owners that indicated they'd be interested in being part of that. But it's, I, I think that, I think we as a city went forward and took a role of saying, just coordinate willing people to do things and give them some logistical support. We can do something to, to clean that stream up that's been needed for a long time, but it's always had water flowing through it. And this year is fortunately, but maybe fortunately, unique in that water is stopped. Let's say it's turned off right now. So I'd be interested in seeing what, what we could do to get, get the community organized and motivated to, to do something as well as do some things along those portions of that, that stream that, that we are the property owner.
Mr. Caulfield, do you know of any initiatives in that regard?
I, I don't, Mayor, but if that's something the council would like us to pursue, give me some direction and we can certainly take a look at it. We would have to most likely start with fish and wildlife to see what kind of permits. Typically, they require permits to get into the creeks and start cleaning things up and such. But again, if it's something the council would like us to take a look at. Can you hear me?
I, I, is there a sense of council that we'd like to pursue something like that?
Please try and put some volunteers on out there.
Yeah, maybe providing, we have dump trucks. Pick up stuff.
And I've seen those same, that those, those folks are riding those. A lot of it's on private property though, right? So we don't have access and we can't have volunteers stomping through people's backyards. So I mean, there are challenges, but, but I think helping it along by taking the garbage, for instance.
I can't, can't see too many property owners denying access if you're going to take garbage out of their backyard.
I, I don't know. I'm not on a creek, nor am I on a lake, but that's all.
Anything else, Mr. Bradsterry? Ms. Farmer, Mr. Caulfield.
I, I would like to say that, you know, the creek, it's a waterway of the state, so the creek is not privately owned typically.
Check with, check with the city attorney on that. It's not navigable, so who knows? It's certainly not navigable now. If you have a skateboard. Ms. Farmer.
I, I just can't help but thinking about what people toss into the water when there is water. And I would worry about there being dangerous, sharp things and liability. And maybe we might have to consider it a nuisance or an abate or abate it like, like a house. I don't know. I don't have anything further.
Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Moss regarding recreation, things that are wanted and needed. I think that a broader conversation could be, would be welcomed. So just wanted to say thank you for talking about that more.
Mr. Wayland.
Thank you. That was going to be one of my follow-up comments to the plethora of public comment tonight. With regard to kids and recreation programs, you know, we used to have, as I recall back when Dennis was here, Higashiama, we used to have a, some sort of summer parks and recreation program. And I haven't heard much. We could have had a COVID glib this last year. But I think we need to do a better job this next year of reinvigorating some sort of program and at least if nothing else, making a part of our approach to inquire with those facilities that do exist. And I have mentioned the existence of the Boys and Girls Club. And I have also mentioned the existence of the YMCA. When, when I was on the board of the YMCA, the advisory board, it was our policy that no one was ever denied admission for lack of ability to pay. I don't know if that has changed over time, but I hear nothing but from the audience, members who talk about the topic, that it's not affordable. I don't know that to be true. So I think perhaps getting some education out there about the existing facilities. And I've also not heard that the Boys and Girls Club is full. It may be true, but I think getting our hands around what assets we have in this community and how we can better support the youth with programs that do exist and how we can supplement those programs would be a positive thing. So that's all I have to say tonight.
Yeah, we're at an additional disadvantage because Superior Court took over the Pierce County Parks Facility on Lakewood Drive. Though I also know from a county standpoint that there was a subsidy of federal funds paid to the City of Lakewood to make summer youth programs more accessible. So that was county-wide, including every municipality where, out of COVID funding, fees were paid to lower the barriers.
Nice one. If I can dovetail, I'm also a little frustrated that there isn't much comment or acknowledgement of the amazing facilities in our parks. It's one thing to have a building, it's another to tell your kid to go out and play. Hopefully they're more accessible. And I know we're trying to get parks and more neighborhood locales, right? That's our policies to have them within a half mile or quarter mile walking distance from a neighborhood. But the parks are out there and we just need to perhaps communicate better the amenities we have in our parks, including Springbrook and Tillicum and Harry Todd.
Well, if, you know, it's ironic that we share some of the very priorities that were expressed as criticisms. For example, we have not provided for any amenities in the more, more well-to-do areas of, of the city. We have just put a fishing pier on American Lake and improved that park. We created the park in Springbrook at a whole cloth that didn't exist at all. So incrementally, could we do more? Certainly. But we have pursued those very priorities and put our, our money there. Ms. Bradsterry.
Yeah, I, I do think that activities for youth waned somewhat last summer during the COVID time. But they are coming back, but they're coming back more quickly for younger children than they are for, for teens. The Y, for example, hasn't reinstituted. It's, you know, it's always weekly had an, had an, had an evening event for, for teens to be able to go and do that. And teens were often participants in things like the Summer Fest and things like that were, and, and events that we had that, that got them going on. I will say that at the two concerts that I've been to, there has been young people's attendance, whether it's teens or slightly older doing that, you know, enjoying. young people's attendance, whether it's teens or slightly older doing that, you know, enjoying those. That, the, you know, our parks program, while we didn't have the traditional program that we historically had that was based in a school, you know, frequently at Park Lodge, we, we do have a, a, a mobile parks program this year that's, that's traveling and is there's a day in, in, in each park that, that is, that is doing that and that's, that's, that's supported by community groups and neighborhoods as well as the city, but that we're running that. So I think we can move forward and the library had typically been a a, a, a source for, for, for activities for young people and they've just reopened. And they're, and with, with new rules. So I think that we're, we're there, but we, you know, in terms of a center, you know, there is, there is a tension between prioritizing a youth recreation center and prioritizing a adequate senior center. And, you know, that we got some census data quoted to us that talked about you know, nine thousand seniors in, in Lakewood that this, that this census showed and then and maybe twice that number of people under eighteen, but that group under eighteen is got a lot of subgroups to it. And and as we continue our efforts to work with the library to get them to move forward with a new facility for a library that can be paired with a community-based facility, maybe there's a way to do it with so that it's got some both some youth and some senior pieces to it, but that's, I think, a partnership that we need to pursue.
And we have attempted to do that and I'm sure we'll try again. I had two items. First, I'd like to commend Mr. Gumm again for his presentation tonight and also for showing up Tuesday morning at Coffee with the Mayor to talk about the rental housing safety program which overlaps with that. A couple of pictures were the same. And second one is, kind of like to get a council sense on this. One of the things that's happened with youth in the COVID environment is that they've lost looks like most of two years of in-person instruction and socialization. It also appears that from best evidence, there are not going to be enough of other people vaccinated to get our way out of this. It has to be people who are people need to be vaccinated who are reluctant. For what it's worth, I would like to do a mayor's message indicating that while you may have rights, there's responsibility that goes with it. And there's a responsibility, I think, that while you may have rights, everybody has rights. Rights come with responsibilities and that you have the responsibility to get vaccinated because you affect other people. Most likely the children who don't have the opportunity to make that choice. And please, please get out and get vaccinated. And to put that out as a mayor's message. Not that we're going to require a mass, a mandate like some were trying to do, but it's, it's getting more and more obvious that the it, it, we need to accelerate the, the change in attitude among those who are reluctant. Because my vaccination doesn't protect my grandkids. Even though our whole family, extended family is vaccinated to the extent that it's available. Just like to get a sense of the council on that. Uber, Uber encouragement. You know, if, if a half a dozen more people reach the tipping point, it's a half a dozen more people.
Can't ask video with all of us portrayed and, and, you know, kind of making a humorous but also educational. You know, get on the, we're all vaccinated. Whatever you have to say, but you know, something that's funny that grabs attention because I think just being taught that.
Get it, yeah. Get the and we'll try to think of something. Get on the stick, get the prick. All right, then we'll move to an executive session. We will now recess, recess into executive session for approximately twenty minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two, thirty-one, ten, one, I to discuss with legal counsel representing the city litigation or potential litigation. City council is not expected to take action following the executive session except to adjourn. We are now in recess.